Welcome to Wednesday, August 20, 2025. The time is now 3:00 PM and I'm going to call this council work session to order. We do have an updated agenda, so we're going to start with the clearing confusion and setting the record straight. So this is more council meetings held on July 16, 2025. The first item was dance floor at 13 nights. At the July 16, 2025 council work session, a citizen commented that dance area was unsafe and that in the previous years there was a dance floor that was more safe. The citizen proposed that the city evaluate and create a safer dance floor. The response is a review of the issue shows that flooding issues and the construction of the riverfront project led the city to remove the dance floor for the 2025 season. For the 2026 season, the city and the event contractor will be looking at improvements and different configuration for the temporary stage and dance area with ADA improvements. That current space in front of the stage consists of a concrete pathway embedded into the flat lawn on either side which meets all park use safety requirements. The second item was fire on the fireworks barge. At the July 16, 2025 council work session, a citizen commented that he believed that there was a fire on fireworks barge on the 4th of July and asked if the event manager treadways taking steps to make it safer. The response, first, the city council would like to clarify that it contracts directly with Western Display, the company hired to provide the 4th of July fireworks. It has been contracting directly with Western Display for more than a decade. The city's prior event manager has never contracted with or managed the firework contract. The city's current event manager did not do so this year. The city has confirmed that there was a fire on the barge and also there were fire extinguishers on the barge and that the fire was extinguished in accordance with the firework contractor's safety protocols, which required waiting until the fireworks were discharged prior to extinguishing the fire. No injuries were reported. As part of the contractor to produce the fireworks show, Western Display is responsible for ensuring the safety of the fireworks show. Their crew supplying their own event insurance and meeting all safety requires safety regulations to produce a safe show. The city has asked that Western Display assess this year's event year's event to prevent fire on the barge for future events. The city is evaluating additional comments and questions made at the July 16, 2025 meeting to confirm the factual information prior to responding. Right. Okay, so that puts us over into visitor comments. So now's the time for visitor comments. The visitor comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Please address your comments to the mayor and the council members. The city council will take input into input all consideration. Please limit your share to three minutes or less. In observant Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Responses to the visitor comments, if needed, will be published in the next city council regular session packet. Please provide contact information of the signage at the back of the room and when you come up, state your name for the record. Thank you for participating. Who is first?
Good afternoon. Steven Toski for citizens of St. Helens. I'm here to talk about a couple of things. Number one being the fish eagle osprey armboat. My vision of St. Helens is a prosperous city with a very vibrant waterfront. And I've been in a lot of places and lived in a lot of places where the water is a huge part of everyday activities. I have a boat here. I'm on the I spent four hour, 400 hours in the last two years on the river. And I've seen the effects of the fish eagle osprey, lines of people on the docks, happy faces, all people. All people taking part in our special event, Sandcastle competition, Halloween Town. And there are a lot more possibilities for the use of that vessel. That vessel really just kind of got underway. It's a Coast Guard approved vessel that can carry 30 passengers. It is an extremely valuable asset. It is part of our fabric of the waterfront being a long-term plan for our prosperity. There are other people that have a different point of view of that boat. They feel like the boat should be sold. Councilor Hubbard was on the newspaper thing. He thought the worst, the worst decision the city's ever made. You and I have a much different vision of what our city is going to be like and the use of that. To say that people going back and forth from our docks to our island and having a great time and spending their money here in our town is a vision that I see from this town. And I think that although the council right at this point is on its plate and there is no current viable plan for the use of the of the boat. I think it hasn't been given a fair chance and that's what I said in the budget. I did talk to E2C. They said the boat was paid for by concessions from people using the boat in the past. And I think that there are, before we sell this boat, I think you should yourselves or maybe for future council, keep this as an asset. Understanding something we may want to use in the future. It's part of our vision. It's part of our strength. It's part of fun. Being on the water is fun. And that's what this place is about, fun. So I would urge you to table the discussion and find figure out what to do with it at a future date and not be selling it. The second thing is about Chief Smith. You guys are in very significant litigation. I don't know what's going on with that. I really don't. But I would suggest you put Chief Smith on a temporary basis. Don't make him permanent chief because I don't know how things just fuck out with Hoag's litigation. Last thing you guys want to do is end up making this guy permanent chief and then later having to reverse that because you end up needing to do a settlement with Hoag. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Next comment?
We go past two items. Kind of prologue. The mayor, Art, this, this myself, John, in terms of, well, I had a meeting a couple of Fridays ago. I have an overview of the lagoon toxic waste Portland harbor business. Meeting lasted about an hour. What Art and I have decided, we make a proposal that to the council that we, Art and I give a 30 to 40 minute presentation about the details of what's involved with the toxic waste lagoon. The presentation would include the history and bio and geo dangers of the site, the sewer system, the waterway. The details can be detailed on that. The other details that have to get in is the loading, unloading, storage, treatment and placement of the stuff being moved. There's a lot of data and numbers that should be looked at and they're big numbers. That's the real problem. The other thing is how do you move this stuff in? You can think about trucks, trains or barges and each of those has some interesting problems. The barges right now you can't do because of DEQ. And yet that used to be a major barge facility for the river for the paper plant. So that's we are asking to give you and the public either at a work session or the regular session, a presentation of all the detail, a great many of the details of the toxic waste pond and it includes a lot of things that are already a problem. And one of the problems that we're going to point out is the device, the lagoon cooling pond right now has some geo hazards, even without the toxic waste from Portland into it. The next thing is there's going to be a discussion of resolution 3310. We had a resolution 1872, which gave John authority at that time it would sell the piece of ground of the mill to the grow facility, mainly the marijuana business. And one of the problems that I have with that is we gave the authority, we, the council gave the authority to John. The council cannot give away the authority that it has to do. It cannot give away its responsibility. So I would look very carefully into this. Now, you can have John say do the negotiations, but it has to come back to you for final decision and that was not true. And we got into some big legal problems back to the sale of the marijuana business was then deemed null and void. And the null and void seems to stand and yet these people still have ownership of the property and they're still paying taxes to the county and they're paying us money. So there's a question about how, what kind of authority the council can give to the administrator. Some of this has to do definitely with our charter. Now, it can be done if the community votes on it, but not by action of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
Frank, Frank, I'm sure you're aware that in a recent court hearing, the city attorney, your city attorney admitted that contrary to what you've all said, that you've at least saw the documents, there's nothing to hide, that there are over 10,000 pages of documents that have not been released. 10,000. That's what your attorney said. But it's certainly not very transparent, is it? So I look forward to those pages being released and see what's in them. I'm also going to bring up some of the text messages that was released by a request from Nick. Clearly, I'm sure Mr. Walsh has read some of them. Your council said again and again, despite what you now appear as Rosie, I'm glad you're not trying to keep firing them like you used to say. But they clearly don't trust you. Said that multiple times, multiple council people have done it. And then we found out in some of those tech messages, you know, what a little weasel branding is about trying to disinvite the mayor to the ribbon cutting. Of course, you all went along with it. I think that's pretty disgusting. Mayor should have been there. Former mayor should have been there. And it was ridiculous that you eliminated him because he protested about some things that were happening, which I know none of you guys would ever bother to do that. Finally, you, I would agree with Water Taxi. We have the only public park that's accessible by water in the United States. It is the only one. Fact that we, you have a contractor that doesn't know what they're doing and know how to use it, doesn't mean that that won't change in the future. It's an asset. Sand Island is an asset to us and we should figure out how to use it and not sell it and get a contractor and maybe even a separate contractor that can operate the water taxi profitably. Finally, I want to talk about the harassment that mayor has been giving to Harvey and his initiative, which will pass. That initiative will get signatures and it will pass. Whether it happens this November or May or next November, it will pass. You will lose that funding and the threats about, oh, all the services that we have to cut. The key point there is if you can't afford to build the police station without cutting, just paying the interest on me, then you can't afford the police station. That's the message. If you have to cut services to pay interest that you are getting right now with an illegal water bill fee, then you can't afford it. And you have never explained how you're going to actually pay the principal. You are only paying the interest. So this fee will go on forever. So explain to me how the actual police station is going to get paid for when you are only going to charge interest. And Harvey's will pass. So get used to losing. There's 787,000 dollars because it will happen.
Comment please.
Our citizen, I had a couple of comments for you guys. I know we've, I love the waterfront. I love everything that's going on down there. But I've noticed that we used to have signs up down there that reminded people not to be riding bicycles, skateboards and other things down there. And last week, got an injured arm now, two or three times during 13 nights on the river. I had people come within two feet of me from behind, which when you're injured, really freaks you out. And so I'd like to ask that we get our signage back up down there. I know we have signage on the sidewalks here that remind people you're not supposed to be riding bicycles and stuff on the sidewalks and up in the Holton area. And I think it's important, especially in 13 nights on the river, when we have a lot of people down there that we shouldn't have bicyclists racing around haphazardly down there, you know? Or is it for free rein? And that brings me then to the other one that I have and that is that we're starting to have a little bit of an epidemic now with electric motorcycles. They don't have pedals, so they're, my book, they're a motorcycle. They can be just as powerful as somebody with a big engine motorcycle because electric has been proven that it's faster than gasoline. We have a lot of people that are riding our trail systems on electric motorcycles, e-bikes and other things. And also I've said a couple of times, your farthest dirt pile out here on the veneer plant property, I believe you've removed all the other, which I thank you for making it lower. Now you can see the river. But that big one out there, I've been told, has to stay. It's slightly contaminated possibly. And we are starting to have people ride up and down that on motorcycles, e-bike motorcycles and tearing it up. If that really is something that we're trying to save, we're trying to vegetate so it doesn't wash and everything else, we really need to try to get a stop, put a good sized ring of rocks around the base of it so that they can't keep racing up and down it. Otherwise, before we know it, everybody with a ATV is going to be down here trying to climb that big dirt pile at the end down. My comments are mine and mine alone. Nothing to do with any commissions that I'm on. I probably should have stated that in the beginning. So that's my only comments. Thank you.
Next comment, please.
Hi, I'm Holcomb. I'm the owner of the Klondike and I kind of wanted to put something on your radar. Just, this is just sort of like an FYI seed thing. Come by and tell you moment. You all know I've been working on trying to reactivate the upper floors of the hotel. And we're, I think things are kind of coming together enough to say that the financing for that may actually come together in the next two, three months possibly. And so I just wanted to put on your radar that we might be breaking ground as early as November, which means that by 27, there could be a 19-room hotel down here for the first time. And so I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar that this is happening. I know you guys are working on a lot with the development next door. And I sort of put it on my docket to be more in touch with the city generally as we get into the development of the building and the hotel. Interesting facts include that the 19 rooms, once they stabilize, could roughly double the TLT budget in town within a couple of years. And there's enough room on the property to expand more rooms, five or six tiers down the line, if there was a market for that. So I just kind of wanted to put that on, on your plate, like in your, put land the seed in your minds. That may be coming together very soon. And that was it. That was really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next comment? Is there anybody online?
Hello, Adam St. Pierre. Just wanted to make a quick comment. You know, I think it's kind of funny. Some of the people get up there who changed their mind in their opinions based on whatever they're best. The water taxi, don't know, don't care. I think it's kind of ironic that somebody, you know, while they were on the budget committee, didn't want to have any equipment sitting and paying insurance on it for something that's not going to be used, that doesn't have a use for it right this minute. And now all of a sudden, we should hold on to something just because we might need it one day. I think it'd be nice to have a little bit of consistency there. And it would also be nice to, if the city was ever provided any paperwork on the ROI and what actual money was made with the water taxi because from what I could see from the FOIA request we found in the city budgeting, there was never any documentation on what kind of revenue was brought in by the water taxi. So they don't really have anything to base it on other than he said, she said, and that's not generally how city government works. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Do you have anybody else, Kathy?
Aaron Salisbury. Hey there. Can you hear me okay?
Hold on for just a second, Aaron.
Yes.
Okay. Aaron, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine. Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, this is Aaron Salisbury. I am coming to you as president of St. Helens Main Street Alliance. I just wanted to take a few minutes to update council about a bunch of projects we have happening. Number one, so I'm going to talk fast, but number one, we have a few months ago, I told you about the Levitt grant. We have passed the first round of approvals for that. So over 300 applications nationwide. We are down to the final, to the next hundred. And as part of that, the, the grant will essentially, should we win it, allow the city of St. Helens to win $40,000 for the next three years for 13 nights, essentially doubling the budget for 13 nights. And this grant is designed for public free music series and we feel like we've got a good application in and the next round will be a public voting period in September. So I'll send you more information about that as we get there. But I just wanted to let you know, we made a first cut on that. And in partnership with the city, we're hoping to bring in some, some solid money for 13 nights next year. Item number two is we are also going to be partnering with the, with the county in spearheading a fundraising pro sorry, got to swallow and breathe. A fundraising program for the historic clock tower on the courthouse to see if we can raise some of the missing funds needed to weatherize and finish the historic portion of the copula of the clock tower, which the county could not use the funds that they received for the courthouse renovation because that's deemed an aesthetic addition rather than crucial to operating the courts. So that will be going on. You'll notice that the, the bell tower is now ringing, but the clock itself is not operational and until we can get things weatherized up there and restored, that is, that is going to be, it will be a clock that is stuck on one time. The final thing is I'd like to let you know about the music festival that's happening September 20th. Give you an update there. That is the North of West Music Festival. It is the second year that we will be doing it. Last year it was the response by local business owners to have something to supplement the loss of the 13 nights events downtown. This year we have 14 separate private music venues in the, throughout the city, both in uptown and downtown. There are 26 bands booked as of right now. It is a family friendly event. There is a kids ticket price, but it starts at 11:00 AM and goes into the evening. And so we'll be starting off with, I think the first band at 11:00 AM is Mo Phillips for the kids.
Quick, Aaron, really quick, not interrupt, but you are at your three minute mark. So if
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I will wrap it up. I just really just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're Sunshine Pizza down to downtown. We're going to have a shuttle. CC Rider is going to be running the loop for us. There are no street closures planned. There is, it's all inside private commercial venues. The ticket sales from the event will support Main Street paying out for the event and hopefully make us enough money to be ready for next year. The venues themselves will make money off of drink sales and food sales at their locations. But again, this is really all about the sustainability of Main Street and creating a lively space that we can all enjoy. Most of the music being played are
We really got to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So good. I want to hear it. There's one more. RT, RT? Yeah.
Hello, it's Robyn Toski. Sorry for my initials. I'll be brief. I just wanted to voice my opinion regarding the water taxi. I'm very opposed to the city selling it. I don't think we've explored enough the, all the programs that it could bring to our city. It's very, very unique. We're very unique that we have the public docks on this side that are easy to access and like Brady said, the amazing park, public park in the river. It can hold about 30 people at a time. And what's very cool about it is the front drops down and lands onto the sand and getting on and off it is very safe and easy. And I think, I just think we haven't even begun to think about all the stuff we can do. And if we could just hold on to it for a year or two. You know, they used it for Halloween Town. They had pirate events on the island. They used it for the Sandcastle contest. Just hundreds of people going back and forth for the Sandcastle contest. And I just think if we just pause and take a minute, is it a plug and play? Tourism event? No, it isn't. It needs creativity. It needs leadership. It needs planning. But I think if we wait to the next RFP process, put this into the RFP for the contract and make them included in the bid, then we might get some amazing events going on down at the river and that's it.
It was under three minutes anyway. Sorry. Okay. Anybody else online? Yeah. Okay. All right. So that moves us over into the discussion topics. So we have the quarterly reports from city departments, divisions. Did everybody get a chance to go through the staff reports? Did anybody have any questions? I feel like these, I mean, there were some really, really clever heads. The one that Gloria put together, I really appreciated the effort that was there, especially all the additional information as well as Mohammed's was pretty detailed. It was nice to see those the projects all identified in there as well, especially the upcoming ones. Counselor Gunnar Center Hubbard, do you guys have anything on the information? Okay, the quarterly reports and then we had the staff reports for number three reports for the pavement stripping project. Did you guys get a chance to review that one?
Yep, I looked at it. It looks straightforward to me.
This one was wrong, but it was straightened out.
Yeah.
Is that about, I know when to ask, but that was same as last year or closer?
Alex is online. If you want me to have him answer that.
I could also take it. I was opened up the bids when they came in for both, both the projects. And this is a, a good year for opening broad bids this year because we've gotten our prices are coming significantly lower than our engineering estimates on both of those projects.
Hold on, Councilor Hubbard, did you want Alex to pop on?
No, that's fine.
Okay, that's my answer. Go ahead. Did not meet our after you, John. Go ahead.
It's, sometimes we have engineers' estimates and the prices come in higher. There's, there was much, there's a lot of people bidding and the good range of bids and some of them are just very favorable.
That's a project we do every year. Is that necessary? I mean, I'm
Yeah, usually you wait later to the fall because the paint wears off throughout here and you want it to be brighter in those darker, darker months.
Trying to save some money by skipping a paint job once or
In some areas it get worn out faster and others are like, look pretty good. So I just, yeah, okay.
Okay, so another discussion there. We'll move to number four, which is a staff report for the annual pavement patching project. Any comments on that one? Didn't have anything. Counselor Hubbard, did you have any? Counselor Hubbard, did you have any comments or anything on that one? John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just same situation. We had lots of people bidding at really favorable prices and happy to get the lower bids and do more work.
Big, big stretch between bids.
Interesting to see that, the market changing like that.
Especially from the local guy, buys as much as a- Yeah, things are changing out there.
Yeah, they're changing.
Work.
I think, you know, with these staff reports too, that are informational only, if any of us, and John, this is probably a question for you, but what I'd like to see too, is if any of us send over questions to any of the department heads yourself on clarifying the answers, like if we could get that information, like it can come up during this conversation as well, so that, you know what I mean? We all are on the same page for any concerns or anything else. That puts us at number five, discussion regarding amendments to the St. Helens Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services Proposed Ordinance 3315, 3316. You taking that one, John? Or do you, does anybody have any?
Didn't have anything specific on that. I had notes on it, a lot of the others, but-
I feel like we have worked over this a lot. Only saw one thing, and that was on page 49, and I don't know if this was the final we were looking at, 3315, that if we actually just struck out and where it's 33, it's on the bottom of page, page 49, if that is supposed to be there, or if that's a grammatical error that needs to be removed. That was my only question I had in the whole document.
You said that one's-
So go to the pa- bottom of page 49, and if you look at, did I move?
This ordinance number 3315.
Yeah, this is three, it's 1330040, where it says creation, comma, underscore, and, and the "and" is struck out, imposition, determination. I didn't know if that was supposed to be there. We need to clean that up. It's our final.
Oh, I see. Okay, so that "and" is in the current code. So that strikeout, it is supposed to be in this document, because it's-
Just making sure.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that this was not going to be a mild copy. I would have looked at it when I signed it, but just making sure.
Yeah.
We'd ask now. Okay. That's all I had. Great. Funny, I thought it was well done. Thank you for all the hard work on that.
I'd like to show the strike throughs and underlines, just so you can see the changes.
Yeah, I got that, but I thought that that was the final. I know we had multiple. I didn't know that that one was, I thought this was the final one, so it makes sense now. It was the only change I saw in there, so I thought it might just be a scapegoat, so. Counselor Gunderson?
Yeah, look good.
Okay. And we're cruising. Okay, then moves us on to number six, the discussion regarding the water taxi, continued. That's all of you, John.
Yeah, I've been spending a fair amount of time trying to get Fish Eagle back into compliance. And it's, it has, it does have a COI, so it's going to be inspection, and there's, when you think about that, there's two levels. There's the National Document Center, and then there's the State Chapter and the Portland Chapter that, and it's, we've got a letter back after, even after the, the COI was issued up until 2008, that there's this deficiencies, and there were six deficiencies, and some of them were lesser than others. We've got five of those addressed as of Monday. The fifth one was, and it's really small paperwork, he changes. And the last one involves public records request to the National Documentation Center to get previous documents that exist that demonstrate that the boat has had a COI since it was constructed from, in Wisconsin in 1994, and someone witnessed it. There's, there's an affidavit that needs to be signed, that those people don't exist anymore, so having to do this workaround.
John, to be clear, then what, are we talking about the COI on the national side?
Yeah, that's on the national side.
Okay, so the state side?
What's, what's that clears, then it's, they come out, do an in-water drill, they test your life jackets, the ropes, the colors. If they do a man overboard drill, that kind of thing, which we, we've done that in the past, but that's-
Can you refresh council's recollection on what the first four were? The last was a public record request with a 1994 affidavit. What were the first four issues? One was like a title issue and name, something?
Yeah, there's, there is a, the bill of sale said president, and the title said owner, and that was discrepancy, how the company's name, so that needed to be whole new, redone, renotarized, and all that. There was something in the paperwork itself, we had to click government, and just little boxes, it was government and, it's the corporate statuses, even though the city is a municipal corporation, both of those were checked. They made us go back and pick one. Other things of that same-
Just like small administration.
Small stuff.
So I'm getting the straight, it's a holdup because of paperwork, because that-
Partially.
What's the other partial part?
Well, then we have to do inspection.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but the inspection, yeah, paperwork piece, let's say inspection.
Then you got to buy insurance.
Well, I'm, I'm just like, really? Yeah, it's people. But I feel like we're pretty close. I'm getting those, those elements. That, that doesn't really speak to the, the use of the boat or the-
When you say, when you think we're close, what is an estimated timeframe where you feel like we might be getting this completed? Hypothetically.
It, it could be a month or so.
Month?
Yeah. I think it'll go faster once the national levels are cleared out.
And once this is done, how often does it have, do we have to go through this again? Is this a one-and-done thing, and then the inspections?
At the national level, it should be the full duration. But at the, at the local chapter level, it's an annual inspection.
How did this pass the first time? How did we get it? Like, is it just a new person, a new regime that came in from the national side that looked at it?
And did a file review and went through it.
So, because if we're, if what I hear we're saying is that, once it passes the national, we don't have to do it again. Theoretically, we shouldn't be looking to have it do it right now, right? If it's only a one-time thing. So they must have done it, though. It sounds like it was done.
Well, it was done initially. It was issued.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't do it.
It would have been, no, it wasn't us, though, that-
Right, and that's why.
Paper was submitted, it was accepted, they went to the local news, and we did all the local inspections that were required. Everything was aboard.
What, what are we paying, what are we expecting to pay ballpark for insuring, for insuring that if we do put it into service? Wasn't that kind of the issue, trying to get it insured? Or is that because it wasn't?
We have required the operator, just as the liability of the city, whoever's operating the boat, to, carry the liability insurance and the property insurance as well.
And do we have people that, not lined up, but they're willing to do that on some scale? Or is that something we had to go out and find out as well?
Yeah, that's, that's, if we're going to use someone besides our current events contractor, that would be a whole facilitation process. I would have to go out. Marry that up with the other city events.
My take on this, if we have it and we can use it, let's use it. I mean, it's paid for. It's, I mean, I've, I've said before, if we sell, like, we're not using it, so if we sell it, we sell it. But if we have the asset, we can use it to our benefit, then let's use it. But if it's going to be, if, if every time we have to jump through these hoops to get to use it, then what are we doing here?
I'll look at it too, from the budget committee standpoint, where, you know, people were, you know, looking at trying to sell off equipment, surplus property for every single dime that we could get, then we don't have a plan for this. We don't have somebody to use it. You know, it feels like we're, I don't know, I don't know how we could just be sitting on that sum of money, when there's also like a whole bunch of other issues.
Like I said, I don't, if we don't have it, we sell it, it's fine.
Yeah, I don't know.
What happens if we sell it right now without all of the proper stuff in place for it? Does that even matter?
I can't definitively answer that, but I would imagine that it does add to the equation. I have reached out to some commercial yacht brokers, just to explore that, what that looks like, or reached out to other, another community that has expressed interest in the boat. Haven't got responses on that.
Have you spoke to Sand Island Campground?
I have.
Because they happen about-
Ground.
Only one boat right now for the island. Correct me if I'm wrong, but because this is city-owned property, if we decided to sell it, we need to declare it surplus property, and it needs to be able to go out for anybody that would like to bid on it, correct?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, just making sure. We can't be making a-
Process.
Backdoor deal with, you know, somebody on Sand Island, when we have a process we're going to have to follow.
What was the interest with the campground?
Well, my question is, because we already have a contract with Sand Island Campground, if we kept the boat as a city asset, we could potentially, they could lease it from us or something and utilize it.
Is that an option? It's definitely an option.
What does it look like for ROI? What does it look like, the, I mean, a boat decreases in value? Right now, it's an unused boat, essentially, right? I mean, it's pretty pristine condition for the $250,000 we spent on it. So if we lease it, or is it going to make sense for an ROI perspective to lease it, and by the time that we sell it?
Well, and that's exactly where the campground was at. He'd need to have his own business case to make sure he couldn't pay for it, so it made sense to them.
Sounds like if we want to get our, the biggest return on that, well, we're going to have to get it certified and jump through all these hoops anyway, before we sell it. So that means we're going to wait.
It would be more turnkey that way, yes.
Sounds like it's cleaner anyway.
And we've been working on it for, it's just been dead end, dead end after dead end, getting ghosted. It's out of the mill in a building warehouse. On a trailer.
But hypothetically, if we were interested in selling it and declaring it surplus property, I mean, we could be advertising it and putting it, declaring that and getting it out now, with the understanding that this is going to get completed too, right? I mean, that makes a difference.
Having a fair amount of experience in that world of boat brokerages and things, we have a pretty list, list of people to be best to do that. Not just fishing boats and things small, I mean, commercial vessels, people movers, that kind of thing.
So we'd also have to make sure, right, we have an IG or there's an IG in place with county to make sure that there's, we have public safety that can access. We're going to lease it. It's, it's not just on the surface. There's a lot of tentacles to ensuring that we're covered liability-wise on this.
That, that is the reason we put, should put that liability onto the con- shoulder that liability, so to remove it from the city.
What does it look like if we own the boat and the Sand Island folks use it? Don't they assume that contractor's liability and insure it that way? For that size. This, isn't that what you said the other contractors did? The other captains did, they came in? They were insuring it?
The, the captains don't, the contractor did.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's the difference.
And they agreed.
They, they hire the captain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And does Treadway have any interest in doing this at all?
No.
So I thought.
I think the focus is more on actually having the tourism benefit, the businesses here in this, in the city, having events here.
You have any thoughts, Brandon?
Just kind of echoing what's been said. I think there's a lot more that goes into this. I think, yeah, I don't think it makes sense to do anything with it right now until it's certified. Wait a month or whatever it takes, and then, but yeah. Police on the island, that's a concern. So if we do have activities over there, you don't have leasing over there, that's going to continue to be a concern, so there's-
Well, it's going to be a concern anyway, right? Currently, because we can't even get people, if we needed to.
Hosting city events over there, though.
Still under responsible for it if something happens over there?
Yeah, our police have to respond, yes, or try to. They can't go over there, though. I know, they have to communicate with the sheriff department to get the sheriff boat over there.
And I think they reduce their, the call does go to St. Helens.
Right.
I just think that would be, have to be part of a very solidified plan, if it was going to be used for events, that that was put in place. And there's either the IG with clear expectations of when and time, you know, those times where the events were happening.
And, you know, my, a thought that got triggered is that, something that, since I've been on the council, hasn't really been really clear to me, is the relationship that we have with the Sand Island Campground. I would love to bring that to an agenda topic, because I just don't know much about it.
I agree with that as well.
Good one. I would like to understand that better.
I think to me, it sounds like we just need to keep moving forward, getting this thing certified, whether or not, and then look at, if we're going to do that, and that'll last time. I mean, do, do we have to do this? Like, we don't have a timeframe, right? Like, we did hold over till next year and, and work on planning something, we could do that. And then get it certified in the meantime? Is that, is there some issue with that that I'm not saying?
Yeah, there's not a lot of use in the winter time.
Well, I know, but I mean, so why don't we, why can't we just do that, then? Why don't we just get it certified to the best we can, which is going to be more appealing? Is that sort of application specific to St. Helens?
The in-water piece is, yes. Yeah. The local chapter inspection.
How much are we paying for that, for the in-water?
It's nominal.
That would have to be recertified one, if somebody bought it then. But so if, if it was used for this area, what's the Sand Island Land and Campground was using it, that would cover it. It would already be done. Anybody local around here, but if it moved to somewhere like Candy, they would have to do it down there, correct?
Uh, there's different ranges.
Okay, so it could be, it's originally or locally?
The way, the way I understand it, yeah.
John, are we going to run into any storage issues with the boat, with Arcadia?
Potentially. Yeah. Could be outside, under a shrink wrap.
So that's something to think about as well.
Be turped.
It's aluminum, right?
I think that as soon as it is certified, I think we really need to bring it back to discussion. So we can, especially with storage issues, possibly.
Can you, when we bring it back for discussion in the interim too, can you get an idea of, like, possibly what we'd be looking at for resale value?
And that was some of my conversations with yacht brokers to get a-
Get a general idea?
Price and depreciation.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if we paid $250,000 for it and already it's worth $150,000, or it's $110,000, I think that makes a difference on what we decide to do, right? But if it's, if it's still like new, then I think that that changes the discussion.
It's aluminum, correct? We've seen the prices of aluminum private used boats going up. They are. And new ones.
I have not paid attention to that.
Costs quite a bit. You can spend $200,000 on a private aluminum boat for fishing very easily.
Wow.
Do you? No.
Okay, anything else? So we're going to bring this back as soon as it gets certified. Good, John?
Yeah, that's good. I'll bring back the Sand Island campground lease and kind of walk through that, how that all works.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
Get your meeting.
Okay, anything else on that? Counselor Gunderson, Hubbard, good, sending, good? Okay, so discussion on budget committee recommendations regarding event permits and associated fees.
So Ashley and I have been working on this. The budget committee recommendation was a $4.95 surcharge on Halloween tickets. And through the budget process, we updated the E-resolution. We're going to need to go back and do, like, establish legislative authorities to do that through an ordinance. And, Ashley gave-
I'm sure. So I, I think that, just hearing what the budget committee was interested in, and having John and Gloria talk about the intent, was to establish a new fee, and to do that, you need the two parts to it. One is the city code that describes what the fee is for, whether it's, you know, what types of events are subject to this fee, and how it works, and, you know, notifying applicants what they need to do to, when they need to pay this fee, and when they don't need to pay the fee. That's a piece that, that hasn't been done yet, and it needs to be done. The, the city can still, the event, the event manager can still charge a fee. It's just that it has a different purpose. It would be subsumed under the event contract, the way that it's being charged now, versus if it was a city code fee. It has, it, it's, the revenue goes to a different place. The revenue would go directly to the city.
Right, so quick question, because the, the way that it's written on, you know, the event permits, like, that's ambiguous in general, right? So the, the new ordinance would specify where and when this would apply, because it raised a lot of questions. If it's just every event that is happening now, with the permits are going to get this $4.95, it's created confusion. It's created confusion for a lot of people trying to do events and what those permits. Have, then also my second, so the answer is yes, that will define, clearly define. What this applies to.
That's correct. A new code would define when this fee applies.
And then the second part of that is, does our event con- our current event contractor, are they aware of this? And doesn't it have any ramifications for their existing contract and or their performance evaluation or expectation?
They are aware of this and they've raised some similar questions. Um, and we're done and, and working with them and I've been in contact with them also just about. How uh, that the city's looking into it. Um, and then a question about performance and evaluations, I think. What this is, is, is a fee. Uh, I don't know if it impacts performance, other than once it goes into effect. Uh, the event manager would help collect that fee. Yeah, it's a. Or events that relate to. Events that the, that they handle that the fee applies to.
In this event, the fee would go to a different location, a different fund than the. Like, what I'm trying to get at, and I'm not articulating this well, is that they have an expectation of a certain profitability, right? And then I believe if I recall, it was increased uh, during the budget committee. There was an additional money that was added. Does this get subtracted from that piece of it or is this in addition to? Does that make sense?
When, if city code was adopted that um, that charged a fee for certain types of events. And the event manager helped collect that fee on behalf of the city. Then that fee, the revenue from that fee would not go to the event manager's revenue. So it wouldn't be recorded as revenue to the event manager. It would just be recorded as revenue that the city gets.
So we base that off all on the event sales and then know the dollar amount afterwards, if I'm understanding correctly, is that what we would do? So that say. Five thousand people show up, we should have five thousand times four ninety-five coming back, right?
If that was how the code was written, if the code was.
I mean.
It was a four ninety-five, four dollars and ninety-five cents per ticket sales of a certain type of event.
Uh, where we could kind of estimate as well, what's coming in.
Yes, and that would be revenue directly to the city. It would not be revenue that the event manager would get credit for.
My, my concern with making this a city code fee would be for um, like. This pertaining to other businesses that might be wanting to run an event during Halloween Town or something like that. And I don't think that was the intention when it was discussed during the budget committee. So I think it's going to have consequences to other organizations in the community, which is not the intention of it. The intention was to try to add a fee to the Halloween Town ticket for, for Halloween Town itself. So I don't know if this, if we can make this direct enough that it's not going to have implications to other businesses that are trying to run events.
What if it was, and I don't want a single Treadway out, but what if it was any Treadway sponsored event?
Uh, I don't think that you could single out a company to apply a fee to.
Any city. How, how would I word that?
Is there a way, a workaround for, for that?
I think what, what I, John and I can work on is just identifying the types, what was envisioned by the budget committee in the city when it, in it. Um, proposed this fee and what types of events were intended to be covered by it and what types of events were not intended to be. And then to draft the city code to capture that intention.
Cause what Counselor Pre- uh, President Chilton's saying is exactly what I'm hearing, is that there is a major concern now because we have a lot of ambiguity out there. And people are hesitant and concerned for their events that they'd like to run as well.
Yeah, and with that, and that is not, I, I, I can't speak for the rest of the budget committee, but from what I gathered from that discussion, that was not the intention of this. The intention was for it to be really focused on Halloween Town ticket sales, to try to capture some ex- extra revenue from that.
And so what I hear is larger events, um, larger.
And maybe scale could be, like, maybe that could be some wording. Like, if we, cuz a, a lot of the, you know, smaller businesses and stuff aren't gonna have. Five thousand people attending it, so maybe.
Be careful with that, though. If it does go on the, on the other, like, you know what I mean? Like, you'd have to make it a pretty. If somebody does have an event that goes over and gets close to that number, now you're looking at, you know, they're gonna be in that pot as well, having to have to, to provide that extra. Ticket money. Uh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Specify city sponsored.
That's what I'm saying.
Or something like that.
Ideas and can propose them to you, but I know that um, other cities have um. Different permit fees that apply depending on the size of the event or depending on the category, the type of event, what it is. So there's, I think there are some ways to categorize. Uh, events that the fee applies to.
And is the goal to get this solidified before Halloween Town? Like this year?
Yeah.
That's tight.
Yeah, my, my conversations with Treadway, I said, what, what, what does the fee apply to? Is it applied to ticket sales? Probably, um, does it apply to parking? Not, um, does it apply to celebrity guest appearances? A lot of those are all pre-negotiated. The margins are pretty small. Um, so it'd get, we would be pyramid-ing some of those, you'd get a ticket, then you have to another, or surcharge and another surcharge, so maybe not, maybe, maybe it's just the tickets and uh.
Put it there. See what we can collect from that.
I think just the goal is like, if, if there is a, um, you know, a mom and pop restaurant in town that's doing a special meal or something, we don't want them to have to pay these fees. That's not the intention.
Of it. Yeah, I think it sounds like um, uh, size of event is a big factor in, into how you wanna categorize this event fee. And if there are other factors, um, you could let John know, that, you know, that have come to mind or that you've heard citizens talk about or have questions about, that'll be helpful. Um, and we can do our own research too.
This, I'm gonna share this just because. Um, it, it's one way to think about the, the retention of the fee with, with our transient lodging tax, our, our room fee. The operator gets paid a percentage to administer the collection of that fee and that, that might be a solution for resolving some of our. Collecting it, then they get to retain a certain amount of it.
So because Treadway would be managing the collection of the fee for the city, then they're gonna, they would get paid that, an administrative fee in some way. I mean, that makes sense.
Already a precedent for that.
Okay, so we'll come back to you with some ideas about uh, how the fee can be.
Okay, the next is number eight, discussion regarding assistance for human resources.
All right, we have Kathy put together a memo for you here.
Yesterday just came to my mind that since you were having the discussion and since I do most of the human resources stuff, that I would put together. A list of items that a human resource professional could help us with. And my suggestion is to um, hire a firm or an individual on contract to help until I retire. I don't know exactly when I'm retiring, but it'll probably in the next couple of years. Um, and so I, to make a list of things that they could help with and set priorities, like. The personal policies and, and um, procedures handbook, that needs to be updated. And that's something that has to be kept with the laws. When the laws change, we have to update it. So that's something that has to be done regularly. Um, we need, we still need to get a recruitment policy and process put together. Job descriptions are in the process of being, they were reviewed for the salary survey and, and they still need to be updated. Um, physically put them all, make all the corrections that need to be made and on our format. Um. Um, employee evaluations, um, they, you know, we've talked about this before, you've talked about it. Um, but I think if we had somebody who could be, who has more time to like get on people about, you need to get these done. You know, and, and also with the department head, uh, what, however the processes that we come up with for that. Uh, make sure that those are done. And then just a bunch of other things that consume a tremendous amount of time. I think would, it would be really helpful and I don't know whether the person, if this is stuff that could be done part-time, that's what I would suggest is just. If it's a contract, it's gonna be like hourly, obviously. But it, um, I don't know that it is we're gonna require somebody's full-time. Um, you know, eight hours a day to do it all. Cuz a lot of it is like, you do something and then you're waiting for something to come back and that sort of thing. So that's just my recommendation.
Thank you for putting this together, Kathy, and thank you for all of your hard work, you and Lisa, but it's been insightful to see how much uh. You actually carry on your shoulders, so I'm excited this is on this agenda. Cuz I think from prior to even my uh, election, I was saying that we needed an HR. Cuz I could just already see the amount of stuff on the backend here, so I think this is a great start. I, I think part-time, personally, I think part-time they would directly report to you, I assume, like you would delegate probably what needs to be done. Cuz seem to have a pulse on what's going on. Seems like a, it's, a lot of the work is putting the things together and overseeing them administratively. That is a lot of work, especially the new laws and everything that comes up, so. I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm, I'm one thousand percent on board with getting uh, some additional help here. I mean, there's a lot, putting together recruiting or hiring policies. We don't have them as a city. Like, that's a liability. Having certain things in place, job descriptions, not even just job descriptions, but make sure they're DOT. Like, somebody is hurt or they need to be on modified restricted work, those things have gotta be correct. There's, there's a lot here, just updated in general. Leads, all the paid leads, the OPLFMs, all the things that go along. That's a lot of stuff that people may not see on the other side of things, so. I don't know how you guys have done it so long, but I'm a huge champion uh, for this. I'll be a champion and a cheerleader for this. That's all I gotta say. Anybody else wanna speak?
We talked about this, we were talking about doing the kind of the contracted thing. I'm, I'm, I'm aboard with that. Anything, I don't know, is part-time seem enough to you, Kathy?
I think to begin with. And if it's on contract, if, if it, if it needs to be more, then um, you know, they just charge us their hourly.
Did, was there any, um, did, did we reach out or did you, John, or anybody reach out to any of these potential? Uh, places to see if they were, they could, they were interested?
I mean, there's resources out there for sure.
Yeah, I thought we were like, I thought we were talking to somebody too that could have, like, help us with, like, evaluations. When we go back to the very beginning, back in February, about evaluations, your evaluation. The evaluation of department heads, all of those things. It's like now we're here in August, going on September, and we still don't have this in place. I thought that the HR also was going to help with that as well, which looks like it's the fourth or fifth goal of my year.
One, if I may, um, one thought is that the city could just administer a request for proposal. Um, that describes the scope it's looking for on a part-time basis. And then that's a good way to see who's interested, who has availability, who has creative ideas for how to support the city and what the city needs. Um, and ca- the next item on the agenda, I don't wanna uh, steal Kathy's presentation, but is about um, it. Uh, performance evaluations, but we've been working with um. Is it the Lane County Cog?
And Council of Governments.
Lane Council of Governments. And I think Kathy will speak to it, but we've been pretty impressed with um, the consultants that they have under their contracts. So I bet when we meet with her next, we could even propose this and see what types of resources. But I think putting an RFP out, seeing what kind of responses the city gets and what kind of competitive, cost competitive responses the city gets to support the city. Um, especially someone that's a professional knows what they're doing and they can do things really effectively that doesn't take um, as much time as someone with less experience. Um, so that's my recommendation.
I like it.
Counselor Hubbard. Saw like a check over here. What, you got any thoughts on this?
Yeah, you need to contract it out. And go for an RFP. Find out the firms out there, they're specialized in this. They do it all the time. You're trying to invent the wheel here. You don't need that.
Right, great.
Uh, no discount to what's been done or anything. It's like you hire these people that do nothing but that. They will come some fresh ideas. Be done with it. And then it's also. We're putting at arm's length decisions that have to be made that we don't wanna do.
Exactly.
That's all I got.
Yeah, that's well put. Counselor Sunny.
I agree. I think it's needed and we can help take a load off Kathy for the next couple of years, maybe make your last couple of years a little bit more enjoyable. I think that would be all about you, Kathy.
Counselor, or Counsel President Chilton?
Yeah, I agree with the contracted. I don't think we should um, hire, hire an employee for it. I do think we should try to contract it out. Um, but I'm also curious about where the money's gonna come from to do this.
John, that's you.
Traditionally, professional services are paid from professional services, so.
Can there be a cost share, uh, since it's gonna be utilized for all departments? Can it also be come out of everybody's budget?
It could.
Well, I think it should. A personally.
Important to know.
And we, can we put this up at the general session to vote on putting an RFP out? I was gonna say, I think. All right, well, I would be all in favor of directing you to put this up for an RFP. Get the general consensus here. I think it's a great step and I assume that they're also going to, while they're doing this, they're gonna, you know, evaluate. You know, some additional opportunities to improve where we potentially have some pitfalls or liabilities.
Be- because this would be a new service, maybe just put it on the agenda and vote on it. I think that's. Sounds good, or you could direct John, but.
I don't know, I think we should vote on it. Let's do it. Let's put it up tonight. Let's get ourselves something to vote about. Yeah, let's do it. Sorry, Kathy. Making your, weird job harder, but I think it'll be more official if we vote on it. I agree with that. Hey, this is good news.
I'm thinking also if it has some budget implications, then voting on it could just help support any budget implications that it has, if there's any shifting of budget that needs to happen. That vote would start that process.
Okay, I think it's you. We are on number eight, or nine, excuse me, of status of evaluations. The department heads.
So, um, Ashley and I have been working with the Lane Council of Governments. They have a, a division in their company or organization called. Uh, Local Government Personnel Services. And um, they contract out with consultants who, um. We cover some of their HR things that they, they don't have. Um, but we've been working with somebody from there and uh, it's been, um. It's been nice because she has the experience and she has already done things like this with other organizations. So, um, we, we have a preliminary process that we're. Still going over, but at our next uh, work session, we're, she's gonna come in and explain everything about, um. What the process is, um, and just get you up to date on, on the general framework that uh, we've designed. Um, yeah, so it's just, it's just, we're in the process and it's just a matter of time. And once we get that set, um, it's something that we'll be able to use for other heads and, you know. And, and I'm hoping that she'll also be able to help us in, in, just in general with performance evaluation processes. Um, from her experience.
And I'll just add, just to bring context to it, as Kathy and I talked about, is, you know, back in, I don't know, March, um, the city council. Um, voted to amend its governing rules, which provided for this, a process for um. City administrator performance evaluations and also department director evaluations. And through that discussion, the city council voted to have the city recorder work with an HR professional to um, implement these processes. So that's what we're in the process of doing, as Kathy said, and I think we, we had one kickoff meeting and I think it went very well. I was really impressed with her services and she is going to, once we finalize some details. Um, the next step is for her to present to city council at a work session and get your feedback about what you're looking for for city administrator evaluations. Which will also then flow into the department director evaluations.
Nice work. I, I think this is great because this is, I think, setting, um, you know, the next stage of the procedures going forward. The processes and the procedures of how we do things. It'll be really nice just to have. Them in place and then there's not a lot of guesswork to it, right? So, great job on that. Appreciate that. Thank you, John, for helping facilitate that. Kathy and Ashley for you guys doing it too. Mark, do you have anything? Counselor Anderson? Anybody else? Alright. Good news. Okay, and then we have um. Number ten is issue John, assignment of voting delegate and alternate for New York City.
Yeah, this is something every, every League of Oregon City Conference this year, the conferences in. Um Portland, it's a hundredth anniversary. League and they're. Counselor Chilton, Council President Chilton's done it in the past. Gonna take turns representing these priorities and voting.
Like, there's only two people left here that didn't sound.
Still my opinion.
We talk about that? Sorry, Brandon.
I was just gonna say, I I'd said before, my opinion was we should send John, the mayor, and a member of the council, preferably council president. Due to budget constraints.
I actually was going to bring something up, because I think I had mentioned before that I I would be willing to go. I I have a work conference that is the same week, so I would literally be gone a whole week at a conference, so. I was preferring not to go, and I had a thought that maybe this year we opt out of attending the League of Oregon Cities and. Look at doing something like the empty bowls for the food bank instead. With that money, because I think the food bank is in um a really dire needs right now, and I think that. Maybe we could look at doing something that could actually put some money into our our city. For people that need it instead of attending the League of Oregon Cities this year.
So for those of us that do not know, because we have not been there or participated, can you say more words about what the? What we're actually voting on and how much it actually makes a difference by our attendance?
I'm voting on the. The league board, the slate of, the slate of issues, the slate of uh candidates for the board. Things of that nature. It's really not the voting that's as much as the learning goes on at the conference with the. All your peer communities and. The training sessions and things of that.
What is the cost of ten? I I don't remember. I don't see it pays for it, but.
Remember, I know Lisa and Kathy have registered us before, but I think it's. I was gonna say two or three hundred dollars per cent.
And there's hotel on top of that. This year, maybe not so much.
Because it's in Portland, yeah.
I would like to go. We can skip it. I can skip it because of the budget constraints. I think just I think John's a good idea and I I think if Russy wanna go.
I know Russ and yeah, Jen, they haven't gotten an opportunity to go, so.
When is this?
I don't wanna overshadow your guys' opportunity to go, so.
Early October in the league.
This October? Mm-hmm, and I'm on baby watch. I don't know. I don't know if I could commit. It's like, could be any day, like. I I would. No, uh, I will, I will definitely consider it. I will, I'm not gonna commit now, but I'll I'll look and see. You gotta, what, what time in October beginning?
October second to fourth.
Speak for Counselor Sandeep, but if you wanted somebody to go. And we could split it, and one of us goes one day, one goes, it's two days, right? The dessert is there.
You just swap off your name. I hope you can do that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Mark, are you saying we should break the rules?
I'm not saying that at all.
I said, I say the last, last two years, I think most of us would agree. I thought it has been very beneficial. There's been a lot of good. Classes and information that come out of it that otherwise we probably wouldn't have thought of, so um. Just being around other people that are going through similar.
I would like to.
Issues.
I would like to tentatively go. I mean, unless, unless the. I got a grand child on that's coming, then I would like, I would like to attend. There's, there is a lot of things so far that since I've been elected that I'm just literally scratching my head over. And it's been nice to talk to other mayors in other cities, um just to see that some of the. Habitual issues that we seem to have here are um in other cities as well, and it's nice to brainstorm, so I would like. An opportunity.
And certainly worthwhile, and I would love to go, but if that's not the cards, it's not.
How about if I was looking to some scholarship opportunities, if money's the issue, because. Been pretty good participants with the league over the years. I've been to the board and several policy committees. Um, we're in pretty, I feel like we're in pretty good.
I think that's a great idea. Let's see if they'll send us for free. That's, that's great.
And it, it seems to something, you guys have thought of this, but. I've been a year to go. This is a good year, since it's near, you know.
Yeah, it's closer than when it's in Bend or something. Think you could be a champion on this one, John. Let's. Work your magic with them. Let's get in for free. And if you can, then can you bring that back to myself?
Sure, yeah.
I think, you know, no matter what, you know, you should be going, but I think if you can get scholarships for us, then it sounds like. It's Counselor Tom Gerson and myself would like to. He just shows up, so.
I got the shirt.
To be the delegate and who wants to be the alternate?
Do you have any interest, Brandon? Sunday, Counselor Sunday?
I did it last year, so you can do it.
Either if you.
Has to be there on the last day. Can't you be the delegate, John? Did your first.
Uh you could have a first and a second.
I know, but can't you just be the Doug Gallett?
Voting member, yeah.
Okay.
Uh elected official.
Okay. Uh, I just feel nervous about putting my name down. Excitedly nervous.
How about we just do Marcus?
Not, not that I'm excited about.
Fine, but I'm available to go, so why would I need an alternate?
Never know, you might get food poisoning or something.
My age, I could break a hip.
Exactly.
Through the door with your name tag.
Okay. Alright, so, sounds like we kind of have a plan there Kathy. Are you good?
Yeah, I have to report it to L O C.
Okay, and John will work on our scholarships. Um alright, and then we're on number eleven, report from city administrator.
Alright, thank you. I'll, this is fairly short, um. Pretty good, nice to be like that confession. So when I, when I think about things, I think about my job as people, projects and programs, so have people. Projects, and we have a lot of our programs along with all the administrative support around those things, but. I wanted to offer a congratulations to Brett Wong after thirty-two years with the city as the. City's mechanic, that's a long good. Tremendous amount of service to the community. He's, we have this wave of people leaving that are. Taken a lot of years of experience after that. The same with our uh beloved Roger Stoffer, it's his retirement. Two more weeks at the end of the month, he's gonna leave us. Roger's been a really inspirational, very good person for the crew, um just called around good person and. We'll miss him, miss him both. Um later in the agenda, in case they didn't get a chance to maybe prematurely, um. Chief Smith and his appointment is, all that is in order, and I'd like to congratulate him to his new seat. I think he'll do. Excel there. Thirteen nights, thirteen nights is winding down. Halloween's winding up. Um thirteen nights has been a great season. Um I've been to most of the shows.
Right, I was unclear, is um. Uh Matt Smith officially the police chief now?
And tonight, it's on tonight's agenda.
It's like, was this the time we clap?
It's on the agenda for tonight, okay.
Your decision to accept.
Okay, thank you, John. That's why I I I whispered it, because I wasn't sure. I just missed something.
I had to see it all.
I said, I branded it. Oh, okay.
So yeah, thirteen nights, it's been a really good season. The the new parks, amazing, the uh the stage. Somebody talking about not liking the dance floor. I mean, there wasn't the dance floor there before those tiles were removed. As soon as that stage gets out of the park, we're gonna come through and take out the gazebo foundation and then level that whole area in there, and then that'll allow the stage next year to be back a little further. About twenty, twenty-five feet, so.
That's the way it was designed when we had a stage.
Stage design was was even further back than that.
Yeah, it was pretty far back.
Right, right now, if we went back, you'd have the foundation sticking out over the, the foundation's underneath the stage right now. So it's not much of a dance floor with. We will uh get that foundation out and um. At the time we made that decision, we didn't know that the. Participating, doing something less of a station, I think, that big stage that came in. Yeah. You know, Halloween's winding up, the uh. Treadways to know makeover of the gift shop, then redoing the haunted house. New year should be, you know, bigger and better than ever, especially having it. No construction, we're not working in, having an event in the constructions on this year's. That's uh, that's good. We hope for safe and successful season and um. I guess that's, that's it for there.
With Treadway, can we go in and look at what they've done before they open up, just like?
Let me go take a field trip over there.
I know, yeah.
I'll take you over there. I I have not seen the finished product yet. Finished yet. It's a project that's consuming all of my attention and perhaps a lot of our legal staff as well as uh. The project Arcadia and getting this transacted by the end of the month here and uh. It's been very consuming and it, you know, I feel like for. Close to the finish line, all the documents come together, where it's all day, every day. A lot of work, a lot of people, it's very much team effort to kind of get this across the. Line here, so. When they do come back, and I mean, you know, they're just just kind of a. Big picture look, I mean, they're looking at bringing back seventy jobs. They're gonna have a six million dollar a year payroll, they're estimating. Properties coming back on the tax rolls, and the city's getting a sizable amount of money for the property and the machinery. And uh, you know, I, I met. Sometimes I wonder if, you know, what if the city had done nothing, you know, what if, you know, we hadn't purchased the mill in two thousand fifteen? Cascades didn't want to buy it and. The city purchasing the mill allowed Cascades to stay there almost nine years, and over that nine years, they paid three hundred thousand a year. Those two point seven million back to the city. At the other property. And Arcadia is only buying thirty acres, right? Buying thirty acres, there's still a hundred and sixty acres out there that has used for waterfront trails, that has. Access along Milton Creek to the park, creating those connections, the, you know, trail, parks and trails commissions desire to have them. Savannah project there. That makes all those dreams possible. So, pretty excited about that. I feel like it was, it's been a really rough road, but I feel like it's been a good decision and worth the. A lot of work over the years, a whole lot of work, so. Uh Police Station. Uh seventeen seventy-one, the due diligence is underway, the geotext complete, surveys can, those should be complete this week. Uh we did have a test fit, concepts that I wanted to share with you real briefly, just for a quick review, it's not totally grounded, but. You'll see. Options and. Second to get those out there, it's, it's, it should be two sided, it's not a.
Is this John's copy? Basically.
Yeah, so what what they're looking at, the cost variables. It's her contingent on whether or not we have to move this sewer line that runs right down the middle, not right down the middle, I can see that it's offset a little bit. So if it's closer to the eighteenth street side where the intersection is, that is pretty close to that twenty foot easement. And if it's on the other side, then we know, stay out of it pretty well. This is just very high level preliminary, um. Wanted to socialize that with you to let you know that that might be an option. They are looking at. The road kind of urban healing building. But also incorporating a plaza along one, whatever orientation does having.
First showed up was gonna be in the northwest corner.
Correct.
Yeah, flip it on the other side.
It's on the other side.
Yeah, it's on the, it's like you flip it over across.
I give it here. You got the other page, I gave away like.
The one with the building closer to seventeenth street would keep it off of the super line, right?
Yeah, both of them don't have entrances off Columbia, which is desirable. Um eighteenth is technically a. A uh minor arterial arterial, um so that's. Preferably be seventeenth of these. It's okay to come off that street, but.
Why didn't they want um a driveway on Columbia?
Rear ends, people get rear ended, that kind of thing, it's less desirable to, like on a highway, you don't have so many minimizer entrances.
It's right across the street with all their entrances.
No decisions, I just want to let you know that there's progress, it's going well.
I mean, either way, like parking is exposed, either one side or the other, it's just more on a. But whatever is cheaper, you know what I'm saying?
And that's the other variables. We're trying to bring this project in under budget.
Under would be nice, but I think we've shaved off quite a few million so far. And it'll be nice, especially um. We're not paying any more fees. Still, it's.
It's still baffling how we have some citizens think that the seven hundred fifty thousand is. Principal and interest. It does, does it not, John?
It's purple principle and interest.
Yeah, it's in the document.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't know how much more effort we need to do to explain that, but reason it. Seems to still be out there.
What you don't see on option one is the controller for the. The old controllers there and above head electricity, there's a whole lot of electricity going on right there that's potentially. Cost implication to, to move that or go underground with it.
If we went with it on um the building on, we're outnumbered, but the building on seventeenth.
Yeah, yeah.
So it might not make sense depending on if we had to go underground.
It makes sense to me to put it closer to seventeenth street, the building.
I think whatever's cheaper.
That's why I know there's some loss of parking on seventeenth street, I see that, but. Plenty of parking in that area.
Softens the building a little more of the plaza.
Designed folks are pretty excited about that. Option two. And other than that, I just. Some things about. My parking lot issues are, we'll have the contract with Redway, they're, they go through the end of this year. Assuming you could want to do that after Halloween or. It's never a good time, it's kind of going a cycle. I'm I'm just putting it out there, at some point with the Treadway's contract, the events contract goes. Um terminates in December thirty first. Wendy, you want to talk about that as counsel?
The city has an option to renew the contract for several years, um and so. Is that what you're asking? Is that, does the city want to renew the contract?
Be thinking about, you know, we're going into Halloween right now. Years past, it's always, it's never been a good time.
Yeah, well. But I.
If we didn't renew, we'd be going out for an R F P, right? Presumably, yeah.
My question to that too is if we decide to renewal, like what's the criterion that we're gonna be measuring on whether we renew or not, right? Just because we have contract in place, we want to make sure like what, what do we want to see as counsel to be able to make that decision? I think now is not a good time, but I think. Something at the beginning of December, like. For next year, like I don't, I personally, even though I think they're doing a phenomenal job, and quite honestly, I'm. thrilled that we have them. I think they're the best thing that has happened for the city for tourism. However, um I think that we need to have. We still have to have a review. We have to. Have have something, so we're doing our due diligence. Have, have something, so we're doing our due diligence that they are. Uh, still move forward with.
Renew the contract to all, this, is it the same contract just for extending the years? Is that what we're doing or do we take a look at it again?
I don't know. I think that's up to you, man.
I think.
So the terms would.
Have, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is it, the city has the right to renew the contract on the same terms and conditions. That's what the city has a right for.
That's what I was asking.
Says it in the contract, so um this, and then. You know, but if there are changes that you wanna make and maybe Treadway has some proposals too, you could have that discussion, you know, and maybe John and and Treadway. Could start having those discussions now.
Yeah.
And then have a more final presentation. Here's how the events have gone. Here are some of the things that we brought up for, you know, if we did wanna renew, the city wanted to renew the contract. Here are some things that we could do to amend the contract or maybe, you know. No amendments are recommended at this time, we just, you know, so I think maybe there's a opportunity. For that type of analysis and.
Love to see also what kind of feedback they have, right? This is their first year with us and what kind of things that they would also like to see changed.
I would prefer that we see that in November though, because historically it's always been. Okay, we didn't have enough time and we didn't get to it, and if there are any serious changes that need to be made, I wanna have enough time. November.
Okay.
Except.
Perfect. Alright.
That's all I have.
Alright, so with that, uh, we are going to, uh, during this work session. Um, we're going to go into a executive session. Um, that is going to entail waiver negotiations under O R S one nine two six six zero two D. Real property transactions under O R S one nine two six six zero two E. Exemplar records confidential attorney client privileged memo under O R S one nine two six six zero two F. And consult with potential litigation under O R S one nine two six six two zero. H, so as of now, at four thirty, we are adjourned for executive session. Uh, all um representatives of the media staff and other persons who are approved shall be able to attend the executive session. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave council chambers.